Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 6th Regular City Council Meeting. Distai Ella, will you please call and roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither. Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Just in time.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Great, thank you everyone. And for the correction, it's October 8th, not October 6th. So, community announcements. It's Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. Join the City Fire Department on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Walmart parking lot for a Family Friendly Fire Prevention Week event that includes a smoke-filled bedroom simulation, fun fire prevention activities, tons of information, and free fire prevention supplies that are generously donated by Dave Christie of State Farm Insurance. Also related to our Fire Department, we had a press release that went out earlier this week where Chief Heston will in February be retiring after 42 years. There'll definitely be more conversation as we get closer to February, but I just want to recognize the outstanding work that Chief Heston and our Fire Department has done and does for our city. Continuing with announcements, City Council Open House. Come meet the Pullman City Council and talk about council goals and priorities for the next year at the City Council Open House. The Fall Open House will happen on Thursday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Pullman Senior Center. We're into fall, so Residential Leaf Collection is coming up. The 2024 Residential Leaf Collection Calendar is here. This year, collection dates will be for Sunnyside Hill, that's southwest, that is November 12th, 13th, and 14th. Pioneer Hill, November 15th, 18th, and 19th. Military Hill, November 20th, 21st, and 22nd. And College Hill, November 25th, 26th, and 27th. And these are all dates we all write down. And to learn more about Pullman's annual leaf collection program, visit pullmanwa.gov/leaves. For Parks Recreation, Winter/Spring Instructors, Pullman Parks Recreation is looking for instructors for the Winter and Spring Activity Guide. And so if you have something that you would like to put on, visit pullmanwa.gov/instructors to apply. And the last thing with Parks and Rec, as I announced last time, the outdoor irrigation season has ended, so we should no longer be watering our leaves, our lawns, there should no longer be a need for that. Next up is non-agenda-related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on this agenda. And this agenda item will not exceed 30 minutes in total. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment, please? And then you'll have two minutes. And then please make sure when you're done, if you haven't signed in, so that we can make sure we get your name accurate in the minutes.
Hello, my name is William. I'm a member of the Palouse community here. I am here to talk about Representative, was it, was it Commission, sorry. I'm not talking here, talking Ms. Delira here. Unfortunately, I had to spend today at University of Idaho while a bunch of students started screaming horrible things about Jews on the campus. And Delira here and her buddies just a few days ago were just hanging out. These individuals who are here are people from the Oregon Campus encampment who caused, I think, well over $200,000 in damage. That's one. You know? I just don't even, I can't even begin to talk about this. So, I want to have you understand what Delira and her friends have been doing to harass and attack the Jewish community here. Yesterday was the anniversary of October 7th, the largest massacres of Jews since the Holocaust. And instead of mourning, Jews around the world are having to face what we call the Week of Rage, in which Delira here and her friends in the local Palouse DSA are participating in. They even had a logo, oh, on their flyer for today, they even had the logo of the PLFP, which is Designated International Terrorist Group. Whose sole formation was created to kill Jews. She and her friends organized multiple activities this week at both campuses on the same week as Yom Kippur. Now, I can't think that this is not intentional, because it really feels, as a Jewish person to me, as it's intentional. This is, you know, this is where I and other Jews should be mourning, and instead, I have to be here to shame you, Ms. Delira. How dare you and your friends organize these events? Numerous students on campuses that I know are scared to speak up because of the actions and harassments you guys are taking. So I want you guys to see something. Instead of us mourning the deaths of people that we knew, you know, we have to deal with this. This right here, Ms. Delira, I want you to see. This was a woman that was raped and burned alive. Okay? Do you see this?
Your time is up, so thank you very much.
See that? This is what you and your friends are doing. I want answers from you. Thank you.
Is there anyone, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comments tonight?
And I don't know if I have to do for the rest of you to censure her? I mean, do I need to walk around?
Your, sir, your time is up. You can provide additional comments if you need online. Is there anyone else who would like to provide community comments? If not, on to City Councilmember comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Fagerin.
I wasn't originally going to say this, but I feel obligated to say that I wholeheartedly believe that Council Delira has her heart for the Palouse community as a whole, and I personally feel like she is not directly responsible for the events that are happening in the Middle East right now. And I feel it's important that we separate those two. On another note, I don't need to remind anybody that Election Day is fast approaching, and you have until October 28th to register or update your address or line. You can also register and vote in person at any county voting center throughout Election Day.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Just a reminder that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, or Action Month, as some people say too. And Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse has many events going on this month. And we're also having a Halloween pop-up in October for people to come get Halloween costumes and supplies for free, and anybody can come. So right now, we're looking for donations. If you have costumes that your children have outgrown, still hanging in the closet, we would be happy to have them. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Just a quick comment and a correction to one of the mayor's announcements, and that is, we want everyone to come to our open houses. However, it would be on Tuesday, October 22nd, rather than Thursday, October 22nd. So, we'd like everybody to be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I missed that when I was editing. Councilmember Guido?
I just want to thank everybody who participated in the Home Ownership Resource Fair. It was our first time doing that on Saturday, and we had probably about 40 participants. I want to thank my fellow councilmembers, Carla Delira and Eric Fagerin, for helping out at that event as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
No comment.
Councilmember Delira?
Yeah. Thank you. So, just to quickly address those, I am not aware of the specific events that you're referring to. I'm sorry. I don't hide my affiliations. That's why I take up...
This is her opportunity to...
So, if I didn't want my affiliations to be known, I wouldn't be taking pictures. But with that said, I do have a statement. Yesterday marked the anniversary of an attack in which over 1,000 Israelis were killed and hundreds were taken hostage on October 7th. It also marks the beginning of the immense death toll caused by disproportionate military actions targeting Palestinians in Gaza. As we mark this tragic anniversary, we reflect on the profound loss of life, the destruction and the continuing toll on the Israeli and Palestinian people in the region. Yesterday serves also as a reminder of the human cost of conflict and the need for immediate pathway to peace. Here in Pullman, we continue to engage in difficult but respectful conversations that aim to foster understanding among all community members. On October 14, Eric Fagerin and I will be holding the second and final ceasefire resolution listening session at Neil Public Library at 5:15 PM. And we'll be building on discussions from August. This session invites all community members to contribute feedback to a draft ceasefire resolution. The session again will be facilitated again by Eric Wegner. To see details around the ceasefire resolution draft and to sign up to speak, please visit I also want to add that this is not an official Pullman City Council or City of Pullman event. There is currently no official proposal that is actively being considered by Pullman City Council. Thank you.
Councilmember Gaither?
No comment.
I did have one, sorry. Sorry. I know you already went around. You already went around.
Yeah.
Can I just, real quick?
Go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone who came out for the ruck for the fallen, for a local firefighter. We had, I would say, about 50 people out there, and it was a great event, fundraising event. I know they're going to have a few more coming up for the Veterans Park and so on. So that was all I had to say, so thank you so much. I wanted to make sure about the details.
Thank you. And while we're on the fire theme, I do have a proclamation. Whereas the City of Pullman is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk of fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to 360,000 home fires, whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarm or no working smoke alarm, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported fires almost in half, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas the City of Pullman residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas City of Pullman residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities, and whereas City of Pullman residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month, whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the City of Pullman's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the City of Pullman residents are responsive to public education and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week themed Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in your home, therefore I, Francis Benjamin, Mayor of the City of Pullman, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and urge all the people of the City of Pullman to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Pullman's Fire and Emergency Services. With that, thank you again for the work of our first responders. Next up, we have community commissions and board reports, and with us, we have Ned Warren, who is the Historic Preservation Commission Chair. With that, Ned?
Mayor, councilors, thank you for providing this time on your agenda for me to provide a brief overview of what the Historic Preservation Commission has done and is doing. As far as I know, this is the first time that our commission has gotten to actually present to the councils, so thank you. You wouldn't expect to actually have a presentation about the Historic Preservation without having a little bit of history, so I'm going to give you a quick overview of how we got to this point. Late 1990s, early 2000s, the Greystone Church was in state of disrepair, and the city had actually condemned the building and asked the landlord or the property owner at the time to demolish it, to remove the dangerous situation. It was too expensive for that property owner to do that, and so Glenn and Melody Petry, a local couple who owned property around Pullman, purchased the property and approached the city with, could we get a little flexibility here with what we can do with a landmark such as this? And so in 2004, City Council adopted the Landmarks Ordinance, which is still in existence, still in the books, and still available to developers in cities, the city to be able to work through development projects that may merit some flexible approach to development. That sort of momentum moved forward all the way into 2010, when the council adopted the current Historic Preservation Ordinance, which then included in that ordinance the formation of the commission. And so the commission was seated in 2011, developed bylaws, and began meeting, and eventually, in that same year, achieved certified local government status, which I will probably, for the rest of this presentation, shorten to CLG. CLG allows the city some level of autonomy from the Division of Archaeology and Historic Preservation at the state level, and allows the city to have more control of matters pertaining to Historic Preservation. The commission is comprised of seven members, myself, John Anderson, Phil Gruen, Jennifer Hamilton, Anita Hornback, Allison Montratolo, and Matthew J. Root. Little fun fact to know about this commission, it is, as far as I know, the only city commission that actually has required qualifications for some of the members. And so, we're fortunate to have a professor of architectural history, an archaeologist, a very active preservationist, and myself as a local practicing architect, along with our other public members. I can't say enough nice things about the generosity of their time, their dedication to this subject, and their willingness to keep staying on this commission. Several of us, I'm going to say about half of us, have been on the commission for its entire, we're charter members. We were there at the beginning. Another opportunity, just to have a shout out to Ariel Maderick Ross, our assistant planner, who is our city staff support person, and she's just been doing a great job, really, really thankful for her support and the time that she can dedicate to our commission. The next slide is a lot of words. It is our legal basis. It can be found in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and I would read it to you, but you wouldn't want to hear that. So instead, I will flip to the next slide, which gives you a better idea of what is it that we do. And honestly, what we do is we dream of having an audience like you get. We just aren't the biggest act in town. I don't know what we need to do to try to get a little bit more action. Primarily, our purpose is to maintain and add to the local register of historic places. But we don't do that. We review applications that others bring to us. And so we're not, in general, we're not an entity that is out and actually generating listings on the local register. We're the ones that maintain that register. If you have a property that's on the register, that property owner would be required to also come back to the Historic Preservation Commission if they wish to alter the property in any way. Our biggest tool, or our largest incentive that we wield as a commission, is we determine special tax valuations, which in a more slang version is essentially a tax freeze or a tax stall at the point that when the valuation is granted for 10 years. And so, a property owner of a listed property that does preservation-type projects on that property can have their property taxed frozen at the pre-improved level for a period of 10 years, which can be a significant incentive for some property owners. We are available to advise the city planning staff on matters relating to Historic Preservation, which can range from, is this demolition project something that's historically significant, to providing comment and input on the comprehensive plan adoption. So progress, I will admit, is slow. When I started over a dozen years ago on the commission, I thought that things would go much faster. And we often talk on the commission of trying to develop a culture of Historic Preservation. To date, in those 12 to 13 years, we have been successful in getting six CLG grants, which are public-funded, grant funding coming from outside the city budget that allows us to hire consultants that do property surveys and different historic research for the benefit of the city. The city's contribution to that is a sweat equity of the staff, and so it's a pretty good deal all the way around. We have managed to list 17 properties on our local register, soon to be 18. We have one before us next week, and I won't prejudge it, but I'm hopeful that we'll have an 18th property. And we have reviewed three special tax valuations. So we have three different properties in the city that are currently enjoying a tax freeze for a period of time. All of them are at different durations as to when they started. We continue to do public outreach throughout the period, and I'll touch on some of these at different points, but we do conduct a walking tour every summer. You're all invited. It's usually a Friday evening. In July, this year, it was delightful, we did the southern end of Maple Street up on College Hill. We also hold open houses and presentations with experts for public presentations related to Historic Preservation. Early on in our effort, probably 10 years ago, we did assist a WSU architecture class with the development of a walking tour brochure, which is a wonderful little thing that sits down at the Chamber of Commerce and really doesn't get enough attention as it should. So if you have visitors in town, I highly recommend you give them. It's a delightful little brochure for people to use. My personal highlights, recent highlights, in terms of trying to bring you up to date on things that we've done in the past year. In the past year, we got the Franklin, the original Franklin School, also known as the Pioneer Center, the school district's administration offices. That was listed on the Historic Register, and that was a very generous move on the part of the school district, and a number of the commissioners helped write the application form for the district to be able to get that onto the register. As an architect, it's a great example of a works project, Works Progress Administration, Depression Era Masonry Building, up next to a great example of mid-century modern architecture, and I could teach an architecture class from that lot alone. The other one was the annual historical walking tour, as I mentioned. Usually, we do downtown. We moved up onto College Hill, and that was a nice shady evening. I've baked sometimes in our downtown July dates. And then the other one, a big shout out to city staff. We have records of these CLG grants, we have maps, we have things like that, and the city has been more aggressive, for lack of a better word, at getting those resources available to the public on the website. And so we now have in the GIS maps, we have filters that allow us to see the historical register properties, as well as properties that are related to the surveys that we've done through the CLG grants. And then the CLG research surveys themselves are also available through links on the website. Really quick, just a few kind of miscellaneous odds and ends to try to maybe explain some of the things about the Historic Preservation. The Historic Preservation is not going to take anyone's property. We are not going to do anything without the owner's consent and authorization. So if somebody wants to preserve their property, we would love to recognize them and help them to get into a program where that is more shown, but we will not be going out and telling people, you have to have your property listed. The, in general, there is no reason that we would list the interior features of a property that I can think of in Pullman. And so when we say listed, when the property is accepted onto the register, there are specific aspects of that property that we will define as being the things that make it historical. Those are the things that we expect people to maintain and preserve, but in no case have we tried to move into the inside of anyone's house and say, you can't change the carpet, you can't change the paint. I've mentioned the special tax valuation. That really is our biggest incentive, and it is something that property owners, whether you're just a homeowner and you want to take advantage of that, it is a great opportunity. If you're a developer and you're looking to develop a historic property, it is also a good opportunity for that. There's other credits and grants that are available out in the federal and in the nonprofit atmosphere that are available to listed properties. The special tax valuation is the only one that the commission has any care over or any control over. The basic qualification of a historic property is 50 years or older, so if you do the math, that means 1974. I am actually listable now. Anybody wants to put that together. But there is a major movement in Historic Preservation of looking for mid-century modern examples to get them preserved before they fall down, before they're underappreciated. And so I don't know that I would drive through a neighborhood of ranch-style houses and immediately think Historic Preservation, but that really is something that should be on our minds. A property can be qualified for being associated with a historic figure or an event. The joking cliche about this is George Washington slept here. As far as I know, that didn't happen in Pullman, so we're looking for others of those. But I can say, from reviewing the register applications, the history of Washington State University is preserved and amplified by what our register is doing. And so if you look at coaches, or major researchers, or major figures that were involved in the formation of Pullman and Washington State University, that history is written in our register, and so it's an opportunity for us to celebrate that. And the last item is, a lot of people drive by a house that doesn't look very good, or a building that doesn't look very good, it's starting to fall down, and they'll say, well, that's off the list, that's not going to work. And actually, we have an easier time listing properties that have historical integrity over ones that have been modified in ways that are insensitive to the historical nature of the property. And so if you see a property, or you own a property, that you think, well, it'd be nice to get one of those plaques on my wall, but I, you know, it's just, it's not in good enough shape, my word to you is, think about it hard, and maybe the special tax valuation will make it float for you and make it make sense. My last plea to you is, we have a project on the CIP program right now. It is approved and unfunded, which is a nebulous situation that people on the commission don't understand. But to try to describe what this is, one of our early listings was the Red Brick Roads, which are the historical roads that are around the depot and wraparound Simpson United Methodist Church. And that is one of the few locations in Pullman that is both a national register of historic places location and a locally listed register property. And we have two beautiful plaques, but the thing about a road is, there's really no vertical surface to put a plaque on. And so what we have put forward into the CIP program is this plinth that would be able to describe, or display both of those, as well as providing a nice little overlook of downtown from that raised location where you look back across the creek and into the Pine Street Plaza area. So if you guys could just find it in your heart to just dig into the city's couch cushions, that would be much appreciated. And with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Ned. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, great presentation. All history buffs, so I love this. This is really cool. JFK actually came around here, so we may have to find, you know, where exactly...
We've already demolished the motel...
No!
No, not JFK, but the motel that Bing Crosby slept here. He had, I think Bing Crosby had a nephew or something that went to Wazoo, and he would stay in the motel that is now the Goodwill drop-off parking lot. And so that's my closest claim to fame. I will look into JFK. That's a good one.
All right.
Councilmember Parks?
Hi Ned, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work, and it's really important to preserve these structures, and... to preserve these structures and not have them demolished. And so, thank you for the work that you and the committee have done. It's very good. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we'll have you back sooner than the last time you were here.
Oh, no. I'll be back in a dozen years.
Yeah. And this is, and this is part of a city council goals where they want to have the commissions and the committees presenting to council so that we get these updates. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Gaethor, did you have anything? Okay, I have, since he's online, I've remembered that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for asking.
Next item on the agenda is future agenda requests. Are there any items that a council member would like to request on a future agenda? Councilmember Guido?
Thank you. I kindly request that at a future, on a future agenda, that we invite the Moscow Housing Trust. It's a community land trust. And you may start seeing in the news, I think they just announced that they are expanding into Pullman. Their board, of which I am a member of, just recently voted to expand the trust into Pullman and would request that Nils Peterson, who is the director of the trust, come and briefly give an overview of what that means and what, how a community land trust works.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else who would like to request a future agenda? Okay, on to our second agenda item for community comments. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on any agenda. And this is for an agenda item the city council will take final action item on. The first one was general comments. This is specific to final action items of the meeting. And so, this would be in reference to regular agenda items one or two. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments with that? Chris, if you can go forward.
Hello, council. I was here a couple of weeks ago for the last meeting. Still here to talk about the sidewalks downtown. I saw that it came up again, and this time, we were actually given a copy of the projected permit to do that. So, we saw that, and most of that's pretty good. I do want to address the wanting of $3 million of liability. And I will have to increase my liability by over 33% to hit that mark. And with that, and then with the even dollar per square foot fee for the, my eight chairs and four tables I put out, take out every morning and take back in, it will make it so we probably will not have outdoor seating at Neil's Coffee and Ice Cream because the cost-to-benefit ratio just isn't there to hope that somebody's going to come in just to sit outside. It's kind of like we've had this carrot. We're just the donkey chasing the carrot that'll just never get there. It's disappointing that we picked another arbitrary number of just a dollar per square foot. I don't know how many square foot I'd need, but I know Rico's needs a lot more. They're going to go from $20 a year to somewhere in the $450 to $500 a year. So, I just want you to keep that in mind as we move forward yet again, that we still have not seen anybody from the city staff come to actually get input from anybody in the city even since the last council meeting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment?
I think this measure sets a bad precedent in having one person, the mayor, decide on the permitting. This opens it up to politics, favoritism, picking winners and losers. And this should be in the hands of the engineering department and/or the council. We just can't have one person decide these matters. It just is, it's unprecedented, for one thing, and it sets bad precedent for future actions of this type. This should be something that involves far more people in responsible positions in city government making these decisions and having their eyes on those applications.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to provide comment? If not, I'll close public comment. And with this, next up, we have a presentation from the Northwest Justice Project. And with this, we have John Wolf. And I'll start with Councilmember Fagerin. You specifically requested this one. Is there any particular introduction you'd like to start with or just let John go?
I'll just let John take the reins and see where we go. I'll reserve my questions for afterwards. Nice to see you, John.
Hey, you too, Eric. Anne, nice to you. I didn't remember this was going to be the official council meeting. I feel kind of more special than, I thought this was going to be a little more informal. But, so, no PowerPoint or anything like that. Hope that's all right. So, I work for Northwest Justice Project, which is the state of Washington's largest civil legal aid provider. Civil legal aid means what it sounds, which is that we represent people in civil matters, so not criminal stuff, only civil cases. Provide full attorney representation, sometimes advice in council, meaning like phone advice to them. We are funded through a variety of sources. Our main funding is state and federal. So, the Office of Civil Legal Aid, created by the legislature, disperses money to various state nonprofits within the state of Washington. We're one of them. We're the largest receiver of that money, I think. We also receive money from the Legal Services Corporation, which is a corporation created by the federal government, recognized the need for legal aid. The federal government created the Legal Services Corporation, pumps money to that, which then disperses it to the various nonprofits nationwide. So, we also receive money there. And then, we have various grant fundings from some sources, like we have one from Providence Hospital for a very large amount related to assisting persons who are patients at Providence Hospital, and a few other, a few other grants similar to that. Victims of Crime Act funding, we also have funding through that. What we do is the big four of legal aid is housing, consumer protection, family law slash domestic violence or sexual violence, and then, public benefits. So, housing is things like evictions, helping tenants recover security deposits, helping tenants assert rights that they have under the Residential Landlord Tenet Act, rights under federal fair housing laws, state fair housing laws. Consumer protection cases are oftentimes representing people who are in debt to a credit card company, a bank, some kind of lender. We do take cases involving someone who's been sold a lemon, various other kinds of cases along those lines. Family Law Protection Order is representing people in dissolutions, parenting plans, guardianships, seeking protection orders for survivors of domestic violence or sexual violence. And then, Public Benefits is helping people, usually helping them appeal a denial of public benefits. So, if someone's applied for benefits and been denied, we'll help them appeal that and try to get them approved for those benefits. We also have some specialized units as well. Those are kind of just the big four that we do. But statewide, we have units dedicated to eviction. So, the state of Washington is the first state nationwide to provide an attorney for tenants facing eviction who can't afford an attorney. And so, we're one of the providers of that service. It's called the Right to Counsel. And we have a unit where those attorneys only do evictions. We have one here in Pullman. That's the only thing that that attorney does is represent tenants in evictions every single day. We also have an attorney who only represents homeowners facing foreclosure. That was a result of a lot of funding we received during the pandemic and post-pandemic. A lot of people fell behind on their mortgage. And so, to prevent, you know, a huge foreclosure crisis, we created this unit that strictly represents homeowners in foreclosure actions against, or brought by banks. So, we have a Right to Counsel Attorney in Pullman, a foreclosure prevention attorney in Pullman, and then, we have two generally funded attorneys. I'm one of them. Generally funded means we take cases in any area. We're not specialized. We're generals, for lack of a better term. And that's myself and then another attorney here in Pullman. Who we represent, if you're eligible, depends on a few different criteria. Generally, I think it's up to 200% of the poverty level. There are different things that go into that, and that's handled by other people. I don't do the screening. They just tell me who qualifies, and then, I help to provide the service. But generally, it's up to 200% of the poverty level. And then, Victims of Crime, that number increases by quite a bit because our funding allows us to do that. And then, senior citizens over the age of 65 also qualify for our services regardless of income. The best way to get ahold of us for our services is, there's two real ways. The first is the Clear Hotline. A lot of people know about it. The Clear Hotline is, we created as a first, as a point of first contact. So, when people need help, they're supposed to call the Clear Hotline. The Clear Hotline is staffed by actual attorneys, and the attorney receives the call, determines the level of service the person needs. Like, does this person need help figuring out how to just file a parenting plan that they, that them and the other parent of their child want to enter into jointly? Or is this person facing, litigating a parenting plan against someone who's maybe committed violence against them, and they really need full representation? So, you call the Clear Hotline. That attorney then determines the level of service. If it's more than just a, what the attorney can provide over the phone, they'll refer it out to a field office like myself, and then, we'll determine the client's needs and level of representation we can provide from there. One caveat with the Clear Hotline is it is, it is so overrun. I mean, we could honestly quadruple the size of it, and it would still probably not be enough. And so, I oftentimes get feedback from people saying there's, "I'm on hold for a long time," and I wish that wasn't the case, but that's just, that's just the way it is. There's that many people who can't afford an attorney and need one. And those attorneys on the Clear Hotline are always working and are terrific at their jobs. But when you're on hold, it just means it's because they're helping somebody else. And so, you have to be patient. And I know that's frustrating, and I don't like being put on hold for a few hours, and I think that turns people away. So, that's just one option to do it. The other, another way to get referred to NJP is through some of our community partners, like Alternatives of Violence with the Palouse, who Councilman Parks just mentioned. They're a super close partner of ours. We do, I do a once-a-month family law clinic there. That's, anyone can come in and receive an hour of advice from me on whatever issue they have. ATVP also oftentimes will refer us to somebody. If they say, "Hey, we've got this case. The other side has an attorney. Will you be able to help them?" So, that's another way to try to get a referral through us that's not through Clear. Community Action Center, another partner of ours that we work with, who will send referrals to us if they think that the person may need it. And they're those checking to see if we can provide representation. The only last thing I want to say is, we are nonpartisan. We're not, we can't lobby. So, I can't, you know, I, we can't attempt to persuade governments or legislatures to pass laws or not do this. We're strictly just here to provide representation to people who can't afford it. That's our core mission, and that's it. But I'm happy to take any questions from anybody, if you have any.
Thank you very much. And with that, first of all, Councilmember Fagerin, I'll let you start.
Thank you, John. I think it's just so awesome that we have a local Northwest Justice Project here in Pullman, and appreciate you and your, the other staff that you work with, helping out our community. Just want to pick your brain a little bit about kind of the unique, maybe opportunities or trends, challenges that you see directly here in Pullman. Yeah, exactly what unique challenges or trends has the Northwest Justice Project observed in our community recently?
The two always, the two areas that are just always, I think it's not even specific to Pullman, are housing and domestic violence. Both of those are just, we could do nothing but those two things, and we'd probably still be turning people away. So, housing might be things like evictions. I mean, with rising costs of rent, that is just, you, we oftentimes have a slew of cases regarding people who have fallen behind on rent. So, sometimes it's trying to help them access money to just, you know, the landlord, they need their money too, right? And so, trying to help them locate funds to pay the rent that they just can't afford anymore. And that's, that is one of the highest priorities for us, is preventing homelessness. So, anything we can do to prevent from slipping into that because if someone slips into that even momentarily, it can take years for them to claw back out of that. I mean, it really can. The stigma's that large. The challenges that bears are that large. So, evictions are always something that I think are a challenge across the Washington State, and the Right to Counsel is partially in recognition of that. Domestic violence is another one always that, like, again, in every county, that's a, that's a challenge. I don't know if that answers your question close enough, but...
It does. Thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
Thanks for coming and telling us about this important service. I've actually referred a couple of people, and this was more in the housing arena, facing eviction or tenant rights. And the feedback was, and you talked about that on the hotline, that I had to wait so long that they were unavailable. Or, and the frustration is that I'm being referred to something that I can't access. And so, it's really helpful to hear that you're struggling like everybody else in terms of resources. Is that, when you say you're, you'd have to turn someone away, is it primarily due to lack of resources?
Yeah. So, it's, yeah, it's, we do, when cases come in, we do have to prioritize. It's like an ER, you're triaging people. And some people, it's like, we want to help you. We probably can. But there is a whole host of people who just have more emergent issues than you. We try, we try not to turn people away. What I usually try to do is, at least if a community partner like ATVP refers someone to us, I at least always say, "I will give that person an hour of my time. Maybe I can't fully represent you. I can look over for a family law case for instance. I can look over your forms. I can help you fill them out. You're going to have to go to court yourself, but after the hearing, you can come back and we can look over your forms again." And that's one way that I've tried to use to spread my resources. The second staff attorney we hired in Pullman did double our capacity. So, previously, I was the only one. And so, by adding this new attorney, we've doubled our capacity. So, I'm excited about what we can do now. And I think we will actually, I don't think we'll be turning away too many people. I think we'll be more open to referrals through the Clear Hotline as well. And we do take, I mean, people can walk in. Our office is right across the street from the Cougar Country. So, we get walk-ins, you know, once a week, something like that. And again, we'll screen you, make sure you're eligible, get a picture of what your legal issue is, and then, try to provide, determine some level of service. And that could be anywhere from an hour of advice all the way up to, "We're going to represent you all the way through a trial."
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Thank you, John. I just want to say publicly that your presence for ATVP, you and Northwest Justice is huge. And it's really enhanced the services that we can provide and really helped people in a way that we couldn't really do previously. And so, and I really appreciate the emphasis on community partners as opposed to the hotlines. So, going to Community Action or, I just lost it, the Counseling Office on Maple Street. You know, places like that who can maybe get ahold of you, you know, help them get in sooner. But you really have provided a very, very vital service for Alternatives of Violence, and we appreciate it.
Thanks. I mean, ATVP is, you are our closest partner. You guys have a great office manager there, too.
Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. Actually, didn't know much about NJP until Eric recommended it, or recommended you guys as an agenda item. But you guys provide a lot of wonderful services. I guess one of the questions I have is, is the service open to students?
We do represent students. Yeah, I have, at any given time, I represent students from WSU. The limit is, it is Washington, so you do have to be SOUVI. We can represent U of I students. If they were Washington resident, I guess we could, but most of them probably aren't. But yeah, it's open to WSU students.
Awesome. And then, I guess another question. So, I was looking at the NJP overall website, and does the Pullman satellite location look into employment issues? I saw that there was a priority listed that said that NJP does look into employment issues like lost wages, discrimination, workplace health. Does the Pullman tackle those cases here?
Yes, we do. That falls kind of in our, it's not quite consumer. It's employment. We get less of those, but we have, I have employment cases right now.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, with that, thank you very, just Tremaine, do you have? Okay, with that, thank you very, just, Tremaine, do you have? If you do, just raise your hand. Okay, with that, I don't see any other questions, so thank you very much, John. We appreciate you coming in and, and even though it was more formal than you expected, you did, you did fabulous.
Thanks a lot for having me, everybody.
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the City Council without separate discussion. This, I entertain a motion to read the Consent Agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
That, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, with that, Thad, could, if you could read Consent Agenda, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the September 24, 2024 regular meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks number 20112659 through 20112660 totaling $770,455.87. Item three is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 20112661 through 20112776 totaling $1,528,893.78. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for refund checks number 20112777 through 20112787 totaling $9,895.64. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for ADP payroll transfers totaling $12,862.98. Item six, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers and ADP payroll transfers totaling $1,118,697.6. Item seven, a motion authorizing fire department staff to enter, enter into a one-year contract with Norco Inc. for purchasing oxygen bottles used by the fire department. Item eight, a motion authorizing a contract amendment with GMV Innovating Solutions extending the contract for one year to provide Pullman Transit's fixed route CAD/AVL system. Item nine, a motion to ratify change order number four to the Pullman Downtown Improvements contract. Item 10, a motion authorizing the award of a lodging tax grant to the City of Pullman for the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Terminal Project. And finally, item 11, Resolution Number R-59-24, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the, and the finance and, sorry, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the finance and administrative services director to execute a local agency agreement supplement number one and an updated project prospectus for the citywide intersection improvement project.
Thank you, Thad. Are there any council members who desire to have any items removed from the Consent Agenda to be discussed separately?
Item number nine.
Number nine? Any others? If not, the, uh...
One through eight.
So a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items one through eight and 10 through 11, so I'd entertain that motion?
So moved.
Second.
With that, any discussion on those items? If not, all those in favor of approving Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda items one through eight and 11 through, 10 through 11, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those passed, with that, Councilmember Parks for number nine?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the delay that's happening. I know it isn't a lot contractually, but it does impact our downtown businesses significantly because they will miss, miss the, they'll be restricted access for two more home football game weekends and I just think it's important that the council, even though this is sort of a financial thing, but I just want to acknowledge that it's, it is very impactful in a negative way to our downtown businesses and to encourage our residents to really, in this final push, please, please, please patronize our local businesses as much as you can.
Any other?
I have something to say.
Yes, Councilmember Gaither?
Yeah, um, I would, I would like to know just a little bit more about this particular budget line. Could someone talk to us about this budget source?
So with that, Mike, would you like to start or would you like me?
I just think it's important for the community to understand where this money comes from.
So if we look at the downtown project, the downtown project was approved, the initial project that, that initially is approved was a $12,249,256 budget. Out of that, we had $9,521,689 that was ARPA funds. We'd identified $685,213 from the utility fund. We had $458,084 from the utility fund sewer, so the first one is water, the second one was sewer. Then for the, we had stormwater funds related to the Pine Street Plaza alternatives that we'd approved, that is $265,676. That was the original funding. Since then, we have added change order number one that, that was as a part of the TIB grant that we received, so that received a million dollar grant related to that. And then we have $200,000 that we received as a part, .09 money from Whitman County. What that leaves within the project that we have not identified funds at this time, there is, from the original project was $118,594. Since then, with the change orders, change order two added $14,688.12 and then this change order adds $137,327, of which that would, those two would be added to that $118,594. At this point in time, because the, this first change order, this fourth change order has to do with contaminated soil, the first thing that we're doing is we've done soil tests as a part of, of the remediation, the contaminated soils in order to identify, whether we can identify the source of the contamination. If there is a source to the contamination, then we will look to whoever is responsible as a part of that source to cover those funds. And that's, and that's a process that takes time in order for the evaluation that happens with it. So those, so that's the reason why we have not identified a, a fund related to this change order number four is because we're still determining, at my knowledge is we're still determining, unfortunately, we don't have engineers tonight that can speak if there's any, any additional knowledge related to those soil tests. At my understanding, at this point in time, those soil tests have not been, have not been completed. So what it, what it does mean is if no one is identified as being responsible for it, then that falls on the responsibility of the city. And we would be looking at $280,285.39 is what is, we have not identified as, as funding. And, and within that, when we talked about, when we first approved the project, we had a, we had some amount that was not designated and part of that is we were looking at how are our fund balances going? Are there any, any of our different funds other than general funds that can be applied to these change orders? And then, and then also it would be potentials, looking at some CAP projects that we would delay in order to be able to cover this. Now I'm going to turn to Mike to see, did I accurately report everything or did I miss anything?
Your dates were correct. No, I'm just kidding, sorry. No, I, I think that's a, yes.
Yeah.
Very well.
So that's an in-depth question. At this time, we have not identified the funds because we don't know who's responsible related to the contamination. Once that has been determined, then, then that's when the staff is going to bring a recommendation back?
That, that I will back off.
Okay.
We haven't, we've identified potential funds, we haven't specified any potential funds or brought that to council to take any action.
Correct.
Based on all of those pieces.
Right, so that's what staff would bring that recommendation back to council related to it. Other questions? Councilmember Guido?
So if we can't find the source for this contaminated soil to, lack of a better word, hold that, that entity responsible and the city incurs that, so what are we looking at in total dollars for change orders?
For change orders?
We've done so.
We, are you including the change order that included all the TIB grants?
That might be hard to calculate.
I don't have that one off.
Sure, I can gather that tomorrow and send council an email.
Yeah. Yeah. If, if you, if we look at this $270,000 that is right now unspecified, it's pretty close to what we started with when, when you actually approved the budget for the part that hadn't been identified. What we did have was the TIB grant covered a bunch that relieved, that relieved part of that cost. Other questions? With that, and you the one that pulled it off, is there anything you want to do?
So, thank you. I just wanted to really publicly encourage people to, more than just restaurants, but the bookstore, all the other retail that's down there, just try to, try to get in there. So with that, I move to approve Consent Agenda nine, item nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that, Thad, if you could read number nine again?
Number nine is a motion to ratify change order number four to the Pullman Downtown Improvements contract.
With that, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, so that passes. With that, we're now on to regular agenda items and first up, we have RJ Lott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This agenda item this evening is proposed amendments to Pullman City Code Title 11.28, Obstructions to Streets and Sidewalks. As we get closer to the completion of Pullman Project Downtown and the reopening of Main Street, staff has found it necessary to bring forward to the council a few proposed amendments to Pullman City Code 1128. Really, there are three primary or notable amendments to the code. The first one is having the mayor rather than the city engineer as the responsible individual for final approval of these permits. The second, the required deposit that is listed in this title has been removed and also removed the permit fee schedule, which is the next item on tonight's agenda. There were some questions two weeks ago about sidewalk maintenance requirements, so I included in the agenda item for this evening a link to Pullman City Code Chapter 11.42 for sidewalk cleaning. Staff recommends a motion to approve the amendments to Pullman City Code 11.28 as presented. Are there any questions I could answer?
I will start, we did have public comment that did ask the question about the mayor piece. I don't know if that's for you or if that is a legal, is there a reason why that change was made?
The change would be made so that the permits could be approved and reviewed in a timely manner and would provide a greater streamlined and simplified process for completing those permits.
Certainly, and I can add in addition that the mayor does have purview to approve liquor, along with the state liquor and cannabis boards to approve those types of permits, so it's not unprecedented that these types of things happen this way administratively and as the CEO, that would be that authority. And there's a process that RJ is working on for when these permits are submitted where it goes through review by the city engineer, by the fire marshal, especially since we're talking about umbrellas and heaters and those types of things. So there's a full checklist where the, the appropriate staff are being brought into the loop on that.
With that, did you have anything to add? Okay, with that?
Nope.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RJ, thank you so much and I can tell from seeing you run around Pullman that you're going to enjoy some clean sidewalks, so I've been seeing you do that, so good job first of all on that. So I have a question, a few questions. The, I was looking through, I appreciate you adding in the sidewalk cleaning and I know this has come up before, but I just want to make sure. So now if we have rock on the sidewalks from our city crews, is that something the owners in front of the businesses are going to be responsible for as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay. With the penalties being lack of removal within the eight-hour window, is there going to be some warning? Because that's pretty tight sometimes.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for code enforcement, but that's their standard procedure is that they'll get in touch with the property owner or the occupant of the space and that'll be their first step.
Okay, and then also as I, and I just want to make sure the public is aware that adjoining areas, if they're abandoned, the, now, remind me, when I was reading this, is it the business to the left, the business to the right that takes care of that area that isn't clean or it's the adjoining business, correct?
It'd be the adjacent business. Yes.
All right. And I will say, and I, I appreciate what Eileen brought up, and I appreciate the, the clarification about the timeliness. Has there been, just from my information, challenges with timeliness for approval?
I think in the previous process, coming to council would take more time with council agenda items, putting those together for a future council meeting. With the ability to have it done administratively, we wouldn't have that timeframe to work within. So we could issue permits quicker.
So is there, and maybe this is best asked of Mike or Thad, are there other figures of authority who can provide that approval other than the mayor?
Sure, the previous authority was given to the city engineer. We would like to leave the city engineer as part of the process, but not let it languish on her desk and run the program to make sure it gets all the way through its different steps in a timely manner. But you could, can designate anyone the council sees fit.
Okay, I don't know if I feel comfortable with having another person of the council to do that. What I'm asking is more along the lines of some other department head or staff?
Yeah, anyone that the, anyone the council sees fit.
Oh, okay, all right. I was thinking, somebody on, random on the council, you know? I'm not going to be approving building permits.
I would not encourage that because the council can only act as a body, not as an individual.
Yeah, great, we're one body. My concern is, is very much what Eileen had, had brought up. I, I don't feel comfortable having, it, it feels to me a situation of creep of powers and that does not make me feel comfortable. And it's not anything against Francis... And it's not anything against Francis. It's more along the lines of when we have new mayors coming up, this is going to be in there. And I have some challenges with that. So, I'm seeing some confusion from Mike and is there...
No, no, no.
Okay.
This is what's before. Now, one thing that I do want to make clear is the first two items you talked about are not something that's on the agenda.
I know.
And I just want to be clear, from the community's perspective...
That's why I was...
Your first question's related to sidewalk piece.
Yeah, that's why I was for...
And related to the city engineer versus my name, I was not involved in that process at all in order that I request it. This was something that came as part of legal review. With that, Councilmember Parks?
So, related to that, can I just clarify the chain of command, if you will? So, the mayor would approve, but then it would also be looked at by maybe a city engineer or the fire department?
No, no. That would all be done before.
Oh.
They would go through a process. Once it's turned into community and economic development, we would go out, we would look at the site, we would go through the tire checklist, and return it to the mayor, saying this passes all the deals, it's ready for approval.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I'm better with that then, as long as professional eyes were on it.
Councilmember Wright?
So, I just have a couple of comments. One has to do with the fact that back in the day when we had like a board of adjustment, there was that bypassed council, but there was also a vehicle to appeal whatever decisions would have been made by that body away from the council. It doesn't appear to me that we have any kind of a vehicle in this document that enables, if you're denied a permit, where do I go to make an appeal to have my application reconsidered? Just throw that out for consideration. The other is that I would like to have a better understanding of the insurance piece. And certainly, in light of what we've put our downtown businesses through with the downtown project, I don't want to make anything any more onerous on any of the business owners through this endeavor. So, I would just like to throw that out there for more discussion and consideration. And I also am not opposed to having a dedicated group, an ad hoc committee, if you will. God forbid, we put together another committee. But that would consist of those that are most affected by these changes and get their input and have a better understanding of what the challenges are that they have with this piece. I know I only said two, but I threw three out, so I'll throw that out there for your consideration. Thank you.
The... We do have an internal process already set up for the permits. So, part of that, as Mike alluded to, was having the city engineers, where... Excuse me, as well as the fire marshal, taking a closer look at these permits. So, there's already a procedure in place to review them when those come in. As far as having a committee review these changes, that's entirely up to the council, if that's what...
No, I was meaning a committee that would be made prior to enacting these permits and associated fees. I'd like to have a better understanding from those that are directly impacted by that as to what their challenges are with such a fee structure. And it seems to me like we have not really gone out and gotten that input. And that's what I'd like to see before anything is enacted. But I'm just one, so...
So, I hear you saying you want to table this for weeks until that's been done? Is that what you're saying?
Why do we need to do it right away? We haven't had it for a while. Why do we need to do it right away? And it seems to me like the fees were so... Not... It doesn't seem like they were enforced very uniformly, given what some of the discrepancies are in the amounts that were being charged previously, given the fact that someone indicated that a particular business downtown was only paying like $20 a year, where, you know, we've looked at how some of these things have been enforced and how compliance has been enacted. But there seems to be, at least what I'm hearing, is that there's also been some lack of consistency in applying what the previous or the current resolution is.
Mike?
Sure. So, I think what's happened here is we're talking about both agenda items kind of all together now. And I would recommend if we're going to look at one or the other, we table both, because it seems they're awfully interconnected. And there's certainly the ability to do that, and then staff can set up some sessions and take some additional input and bring this back to council in four weeks.
Now, I know one of the feedback... Some of the feedback that I did receive from business owners is they're concerned that there isn't a mechanism for them to apply right now, and that's affecting their ability to purchase what they want. So, I know there's a timeliness that the businesses have expressed. At the same time, we have the businesses that would like to be able to be more part of the input. Realistically, we'd be with what you've just... If with what you've described, it would probably be at least three to four weeks before we'd be able to bring this back to the city council.
Yeah, just the meeting schedules alone and rolling out the budget, but we want to make sure we have a couple of opportunities to talk to the downtown businesses, work through what they say, bring these back amended. And then, I was just looking at the S-Drive and seeing where we were for scheduling. So, I think three weeks is going to be a challenge. Four weeks, there isn't a meeting, but we can sort of actually...
We have a special meeting on Monday.
We have that special meeting. So, it'd be the one after it, be about the 12th of November.
So, are there other discussion on this?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Gaither?
Yeah, so, I really want to... I would like to piggyback off of Councilmember Wright. I would really like to see an appeal process for applicants in the event that they are dissatisfied with the permit decision. And I don't know, and I guess my first question would be, may... Does the city have like a general administrative procedure or policy that allows for appeals of decisions made by city officials in general? Also, I think that one of my concerns for this particular... Well, I guess we're talking about both, the fee structure. I like the flat rate. I think that it simplifies the budgeting for businesses, but a dollar per square foot, $250 for 250 square feet, we're still back at where we were two weeks ago in terms of cost. I like that it eliminates that need to navigate the CPI formula, but we're sort of still there when it comes to the... Where we were talking last week as far as the square footage and the cost and the fees. And the third question I have, is this obstruction of outdoor seating not exceeding the one-third of the total width of the sidewalk? And then in the next section, there's this... There must be at least four foot of unobstructed sidewalk remaining for pedestrians. And so, I'm trying to figure out, what does that mean for seating? Because if we're talking about a 12-foot wide sidewalk, that's only four feet of seating, unless I'm missing something. So, if somebody can kind of explain that... Yeah, I have a lot of questions when it comes to these, a lot of questions. Not sure which scenario fits. Are we... Is it the one-third of the total width of the sidewalk? Is that the, you know, the expectation? Or is it the, you know, maintaining a minimum of four feet of unobstructed sidewalk or sidewalk remaining for pedestrians?
RJ?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Gaither. So, yes, you're correct, a third of the sidewalk could be occupied. However, the four feet would need to also be preserved for ADA passage. So, some of the sidewalk widths are occupied by obstructions such as trees or tree wells, fire hydrants, light poles, things of that nature. So, even though you may have a sidewalk that is 12 to 15 feet in width, that doesn't mean that the entire sidewalk is clear for passage. So, any proposed permit would need to identify on their plan, both meeting the one-third threshold of the width of the sidewalk, as well as having a minimum of four feet in clearance.
So, both standards exist simultaneously?
Correct. Yes.
So, if a restaurant... So, if the sidewalk is 12 feet wide, that restaurant has four feet that they can use?
Correct.
Our motion, we table this both?
So, there's a motion. Is there a second to the motion that's on the floor?
Second.
Can we have more discussion?
We have... The motion's on the floor. I have to deal with the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Carla.
Carla seconded it. With that, so the motion is to table this, and is the motion just strictly to table it? Or is the motion to table it and have staff get additional information and bring back? What is...
Our motion, we table it and have the staff get more information and get back to us. And I apologize, Councilmember Weller. I didn't mean to stifle your comments.
And would that include... I'm asking for clarity. So, with staff getting additional information, that also... Is your motion including meeting with businesses that would be affected by this to get their input?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just... It's a lot of conversation.
For both.
Okay.
Sorry, and for both ordinances.
Okay. And with... Am I...
Maybe I can't do that. I don't know.
Am I okay, Thad? Or do we need to do each one separately?
I would recommend doing each one separately, knowing what's kind of about to happen.
So, from legal counsel, we need to do one at a time. This is... We currently have this agenda item before us, and so do I need a remotion? Or do I accept just the motion for tabling of this one, Thad?
I think it's fine if you just clarify that it's just the ordinance for this particular motion.
So, this is relating to Ordinance Number 2409 to table it and tell with staff to come back with the additional information. Is there a second on that? With that now into discussion, and so discussion related to this, and Nathan, is this discussion pertinent to the discussion of tabling?
For one...
For Ordinance 2409?
For 2409?
Yes.
Yeah, I've made my comments regarding that, so I'm fine with that.
Any other discussion then related to this motion? If not, all those in favor of tablings, Ordinance 2409, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Seeing that we have Ordinance 2409 tabled, then can I just not open this thing? Or do...
No, I think you need to address the resolution.
So, we have a resolution, R 6024, that is on the agenda. Is there any action anybody would like to take related to this motion? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, I think generally, we should at least have a discussion on that item before we move towards motioning. I guess what I had in mind when...
Okay, so are you making a motion or you want to just discussion?
Just discussion.
So, Anne, so we have this before, so there can be... So, we'll have staff presentation on it first, and then there can be questions related to staff presentation related to Resolution R 6024.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening once again, council. This resolution is for the fee schedule for permits to occupy the right-of-way. The council meeting from two weeks ago is noted in the council agenda, so that's a good reference point for where we left off. Also, in the agenda item is Chapter 1142 for sidewalk cleaning for reference. So, as I mentioned two weeks ago, the current formula for calculating the fees for current leases was the square feet requested by the applicant multiplied by 50 cents, multiplied by the current consumer price index divided by the CPI of June of 2014. As I mentioned two weeks ago, that's a very difficult formula to communicate to potential applicants. So, moving forward, staff wanted to have an easier way to communicate what that fee would be moving forward. So, in this agenda item, the proposed fee is to be $1 per square foot of right-of-way at an annual cost for the permit. Since this is being changed from a lease to a permit, RCW 82.29A .130, number eight, still applies that any fee or lease of $250 or more would be subject to the excise tax on public property. Two weeks ago, the city council asked that I researched what the city of Moscow requires for their sidewalk seating. They require a $25 application fee, which is a one-time fee, with an additional inspection fee of $125, and annual renewals are $30 apiece. At the end of September, staff and I measured the completed portions of the sidewalk on the west end of Main Street. By measuring the widths of the storefronts, specifically on the west end of Bain, like I mentioned, along with the width of the completed sidewalk to the edge of the curb, we were able to estimate the approximate area that a business would want to occupy or could occupy. None of those locations exceeded the 250 square feet area. The only exception could possibly be would be the businesses adjacent to Pine Street Plaza, because obviously, there's more room for those two businesses. Most businesses on the west end of Main Street, like I mentioned, would have somewhere between 70 to 80 to possibly 100 square feet in space. So, we're looking at with a $1 per square foot fee of about $80, $90, $100 per year. Staff recommends the adoption of the proposed fee schedule as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
With that, any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for future reference, can we make sure that we're separating out the regular agendas? Because when we bunch it together, it gets confusing as far as how we... Because we were talking about the fees, and then we were talking moved into the permits. So, which we were talking about earlier.
We dealt with one. We're now dealing with the second one.
Yeah, I know, now, but...
You had jumped into the second one.
No, actually, the sidewalk was in the first one.
The fee, by what I was saying, so...
Sidewalk cleaning. I hadn't jumped into the fee.
Continuing on, so...
All right. Just for clarification. So, I think what Councilmember Wright had mentioned is actually really important. We've learned from our past, I hope, that businesses need to be contacted. We had a huge... need to be contacted. We had a huge upheaval of frustrations, and I know there was a lot of communications that did go out. Having a record of people who were contacted and who would be impacted, I think is very important. I don't think, I know, is very important, at least for the sake of public information. From what I've heard, that hasn't happened. I'm not sure, because maybe there has been some discussion that I'm not aware of. Having city staff, while I trust city staff, businesses are the ones who decide how much room they're going to use on the sidewalk, or how much room they'd like to use. So, us measuring out, sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the business owners don't get to decide that, because it's ADA and it's also city-owned property. So, it has to fit within those requirements. So, if a business owner wants to fill the whole sidewalk and nobody can get through, we can't allow that.
What I'm saying is, they can use less, or they can use up to that point, correct?
Yes. And part of the process is, they would submit a drawing with that that would go through the process.
So, what I'm getting at is I understand what you're saying, is there's a certain extent, but there's also a minimal amount that certain businesses may want. So, I hope that explains a little bit more of what I'm saying. Yes? Good. Appreciate that. So, businesses, you know, are going to decide how much, how little. They can. We have certain restrictions on how much we can allow. But having that communication is very important for us to understand the needs of the businesses, and then us to discuss with them the extent to which we can allow certain property. When we did discuss last time, the use of Spokane as a comparable, I know I had mentioned that this is not, it's not a good thing to use Spokane as a comparable. And as I understand, that was the simplest. Moscow, in my opinion, does not have the same challenges that we have. And so, I feel that Moscow would not be, although other council members had wanted to see that, I think it's great to keep that. Other comparables, I know we had discussed, but they were a little bit more confusing. I just think when we go to the businesses where we need to be able to explain exactly, not just, it's $1 because it's the easiest, but it's $1 because of X, Y, and Z. That's my opinion. As Councilmember Wright already said, this is only one person's opinion, so that's kind of, that's how I feel, so...
Councilmember Guido?
I have a real simple question. Is there a reason why the city of Moscow fee schedule is not being recommended?
No, we could certainly use the same formula that Moscow uses. The dollar per square foot is a rough proportionate value to how much space a business uses. Moscow does not use that in their formula. Not every business along Main Street has the same width of frontage, so some businesses would use much less, and some would use more. So, using a dollar per square foot formula would be essentially equitable to the businesses on Main Street.
Got it. Thank you. I just needed the rationale.
In addition, there's different rules in Idaho versus Washington as far as, they don't have a state auditor that they have to atone to. They just turn in audited financials. So, we thought on the square footage basis, people can take, for those that wanted smaller, those that wanted more, this, put everybody at a playing field that they can build their own adventure.
Any other discussion? Is there any action that anybody would like to take?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Gaither?
Yes, I just would like to know, what was the reasoning behind the commercial liability insurance increase to $3 million per single occurrence versus some, and just what was the rationale behind that, that change, or that addition to this resolution?
The insurance was previously required. It was suggested to go up by one of the department managers due to risk cases and recent payouts, but that's something we'll go back and revisit as well with these open houses.
Any discussion, any other, any action anybody would like to take? Seeing no action, then, Councilmember Fagerin?
Motion to table resolution number R 6024 to follow the same timeline as ordinance number 2409 to come back to council.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It's tabled. Thank you. Okay, next up is discussion item, and this is referenced to the open house town hall that we're having October 22nd. This will be in the, this is Tuesday, October 22nd. Thank you, Councilmember Wright. And it's, this would be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., similar tables, similarly to how the tables were set up last time. But if you think about the, in the spring, it was community gathering input in order to set our goals and priorities. Now that we've set our goals and priorities, this would be an opportunity to communicate out related to the goals and priorities, and here, more community input related to those specific goals and priorities. And with that, I've identified eight different tables representing our priority, goals and priorities that have workgroups, and then also our next level of priorities. Is there anyone that would like to take a specific table? And I'll just work, Councilmember Fagerin?
I'd like to volunteer to be at the in-town, repurpose in-town railways table.
The railroads? Okay. Councilmember Parks?
I'd like to talk about the library again, because everybody loves the library. Wait, that's not on here. But that was a fun table. Okay. How many councilmembers? One?
It'd be one per table, so hopefully you're...
There's eight tables.
Well, there's eight tables, because I have one.
Oh, got you. Then I guess I'll do the bypass, since that's my other workgroup.
I was going to do the bypass.
What's your other thing? We can switch. What's your other workgroup?
I don't remember.
Tourism.
I'll let, oh...
Yeah. Well, I'll pass.
Councilmember Wright is thinking about that.
She's thinking.
I'm going to do the housing.
Okay. Councilmember Weller?
I'll take whatever's left.
Okay. Councilmember Delara?
I can do welcoming.
Councilmember Gaither?
Maybe community engagement. I'm not, yeah, community engagement, maybe.
Okay.
I'm not married to it, so if someone else wants it.
I don't want it.
Okay, so I have tourism and economic development left between...
I'll do tourism.
Okay. Does economic development work for you? Councilmember Weller?
Phew, that's a grenade. I don't know. I guess so.
You've been on one plus previously. Okay. Okay. So, we have those assignments. With that, is there any new business to come before us?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And so, just a reminder to council, we do have, the next six weeks, we do have council meetings because of our budget schedule.
And I'll put out another reminder, don't forget, we do not meet election night. We'll be meeting on Monday night to continue to work through the budget workshops.
With that, so with that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.